Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to this evening's meeting, the Planning Commission. I'd like to ask Mr. Pruder to explain the procedures for the meeting and how people can make public comments.
Good evening Chair Doran. Thank you very much this evening and to the Planning Commissioners and members of the public. Good evening and welcome to the Plan Commission meeting for September 27, 2021. Regarding procedures for communicating, the Commissioners will have their webcams on for the duration of this meeting. For those presenting on an item, applicants or other representatives for a project, we ask that you turn on your microphone and webcam during your presentation for your item only. A member of staff will assign you keyboard and mouse controls if you are displaying a presentation. We will then kindly ask that you turn off your webcam and microphone when done with your presentation portion for your item unless called upon by the Chair. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon. It's like that on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone feature. Alternatively, for those of you who will be calling by phone this evening for the meeting, please click star nine on your keypad to provide a notification and staff will similarly provide you an opportunity for comment when the public comment period arises. With that said, I will hand it back to you Chair Doran. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to do a roll call to start. Commissioner Dicardi. Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Riggs.
I'm here.
Commissioner Tate.
Here.
And with myself, we have six Commissioners present. I had an email from Commissioner Barnes. He will be absent this evening. So I think we should ask Ms. Sandmeyer for reports and announcements to begin.
Yes. Good evening Chair Doran and Commissioners. So the City Council meeting for tomorrow has been canceled. As another update, you may have seen an email I sent on Friday. So the city is seeking residents to apply for the Independent Redistricting Commission. And recruitment closes October 15th. So please spread the word to any residents who may be interested. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, I do. We've probably all seen SB nine, SB 10 in the news recently, signed by the governor, which are going to have pretty, uh, pretty profound effects on zoning in Menlo Park and everywhere else in the state and what we do. I suspect it's a little bit early for the Planning Commission, or sorry, the Planning Department, to be able to advise on what that will mean for us, but I just want to see if there is a timeline for when we can hear from the Planning Department and the City Attorney about what we need to do in Menlo Park to comply with the state law.
Yeah, we're certainly working with the City Attorney to get all that figured out. I'm not sure of the exact timeline. But we'll definitely provide the Commission with updates as we move along in the process.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have questions for Ms. Sandmeyer? Okay, seeing none, I will open public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the Commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under the consent column. Each speaker may address the Commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The Commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda and therefore the Commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. I'd like to add, we will have public comment on each of the items on our agenda later tonight. This section is for general public comments for things not on the agenda. Do we have any hands raised, Mr. Pruder?
Again, Chair Doran, at this time I do not see any hands raised, but as a reminder, participants in tonight's meeting are welcome to raise their hand with the hand icon and we can select you for an opportunity to make public comment at this time. And I'm happy to wait a moment to see if anyone would like to do so.
Okay, if you want to wish to make public comment, please raise your hand now. Do we have any hands?
At this time Chair Doran, I see no hands still.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment and open the public hearing. The first item on the agenda is a use permit from Thomas James Homes for 760 College Avenue. This is a request for a use permit to demolish existing one-story, single-family residence with an attached garage and an accessory building and construct a new two-story residence with an attached garage on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width, minimum lot width and area in the R1U, Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. And we have a staff report from Mr. Turner.
Yes, good evening Chair Doran and Commissioners. I just wanted to update you. We did receive one piece of correspondence after the publication of the staff report, which was sent to you earlier this evening. To summarize, the comment generally expressed concerns with removal of heritage trees, both on the subject property and in the public right of way. Citing, citing that the removal of the trees and the replacement trees wouldn't provide the same level of benefits as the mature trees, including climate change resilience, air quality and shade. And then posed some questions regarding the heritage tree removal permit process. That is the extent of the comments I received. Happy to take any questions at this time.
Do we have any clarifying questions for Mr. Turner? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I would like to open up public comment on 760 College Avenue. Anyone would like to make a comment on this agenda item, please raise your hand now.
Thank you Chair Doran. At this time I see two hands raised. Quickly as a reminder, please press the hand icon if you would like to participate in the public comment period. Alternatively, if you're calling by telephone, you can press star nine. And with your permission Chair Doran, I could introduce the first speaker actually to that I see.
I think I might be out of order. Don't we generally have the report or the comments, the presentation from the applicant before public comments? I think I jumped the gun there. Yeah, let's, let's see if we have someone representing the applicant. Sorry for the people standing by to make public comments. You will have a chance. But we would like to get the presentation from the applicant first. Ms. Felver?
Hi, good evening Chair and Commissioners. I'm Anna Felver with Thomas James Homes, presenting 760 College to you tonight. And I also have Jill Williams, our architect from KPGY, as well as our VP from Thomas James Homes, Cynthia Tebow. We are in the zone of R1U. Our lot is underneath the minimum required areas. We have 5,618 square feet. The minimum for this zone is 7,000 square feet. We are also are less in width. We are 53 feet wide on this lot. Underneath the minimum, which is 65 feet wide. And we are 100 feet, over 100 feet long, which meets that minimum requirement. So we are substandard in lot area and width, which is the reason for the use permit. Again, deconstructing the existing ranch-style home that has an attached two-car garage and accessory structure and proposing a two-story residence with four bedrooms, four and a half baths, and an attached two-car garage, which will have two car spaces in the driveway as well. And the living space is 2,383.69 square feet. And our proposed FAL is 2,798.64, which is under the 2,800 maximum FAL. And we are proposing a lot coverage of 1950.45. That's 27% lot coverage. And that's underneath the max lot coverage of 35%. Our home orientation, the lot is on a corner, so this does create kind of a two-front orientation for the house. This is leaving only one option for a rear yard location, which is at the left side on Blake Street. And the proposed home is designed to open up to that rear yard and shift the garage location off of College Street, which you can see in that lower rendering image. This will allow the home layout to have a covered patio and a main living space to connect to that rear yard and and avoid having to walk through a garage or avoid walking around the garage to get to the rear yard, which was originally there. And this also allows a more inviting and desired elevation on Blake Street. We have at the top elevation, you'll see that, that elevation facing Blake. It has a front, single-story porch element, lots of glazing, some articulation, and really speaks to the ranch home that originally existed there. The proposed style is actually a farmhouse style. This is a combination of boredom, batten being used. And you can see on the front, we have an accent shingle siding that is on that tower element and that wraps into the porch, giving it a nice balanced cohesive aesthetic. The roof line is a traditional roof line. We have a gable at the front and some more shedding roof. We're using comp shingle and then proposing some metal accents. One above the porch and then you could see a metal awning that's above the garage as well. A second floor setback from both fronts, again, allowing for more articulation and having that first story element be projecting to, towards the street. And the windows and doors are proposed to be fiberglass. We don't, with no grid. And we believe that this farmhouse style will fit well into the context that there's some two stories and single stories and kind of an eclectic mix on the street, some ranch homes and craftsmen, so farmhouse would be, will fit right into that neighborhood context. Our proposed height is 26 feet 10 inches, which is below the 20 foot, 28 foot max. And we did have a lot of conversation regarding trees on this site. For such a small site, we do have 14 trees analyzed, often on the site that do impact. But the, where the proposed design will impact and we'll make sure we protect the trees that we have retaining on the site and trees that are off the site. Five trees are off-site on the neighboring lots. And there are six street trees along both sides, Lake Street and College. And then we have three trees on site. Five trees are proposed for removal and nine trees are to be retained and protected. We have one non-heritage tree due to health we are removing. We have two heritage trees on site, which we are proposing to remove. One is the bay laurel due to health and development and the Japanese pittusporum for health and that's in the rear yard. The bay laurel was, is one of the trees that's on College Street towards the front. This is a rather large tree. And in order to retain the tree, it would significantly impact the buildable area, which we've discussed with the city arborist. We've provided an alternate design to make sure that that tree could be removed and that we can in fact have new development on the site. The two street trees along College Street are also proposed to be removed. And this is due to development and again, had further conversation with the city arborist, allowing this removal and making sure that we are replacing these trees with more significant 60-inch box London plane trees. We are also replacing the other two, the two heritage that are on site, the bay laurel and the pit forum. And that'll have an Edith Vogue Southern Magnolia and it's 48-inch box and then also a 15-gallon London plane tree. We're within, though we're a narrow lot, we're within the setbacks and provide relief along those property lines. And we have reached out to neighbors quite a while ago. This project's been going on for quite some time. So we reached out to neighbors in December of last year, 2020, and haven't received any contact or concern since then. But regarding the trees that has been a comment tonight, we have worked extensively with the city arborist and taken several months to make sure that the removal is approved and that we are replacing appropriately. And if you have any questions, again, I have my team on to answer any design-related or tree-related question. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the Commission for the applicant this time? Commissioner Kennedy.
Clarifying question. Do we happen to know how many projects are in the pipeline for Thomas James Homes for the next year? Properties that they've come across or are actively submitting paperwork in for? And the reason why I'm asking is because, you know, I'm all for, I'm all for the modern farmhouse, but I feel like I've started, I'm starting to feel like I live in Levittown and not in a good way, if there's even a good, good way to do that. Like all the houses look the same. And it's tiresome. It all appeals to one particular type of buyer. It is, you know, it, it does not, it does not fit the neighborhood at, at all. And I really feel like we are continuing to walk down a path that we're gonna, we are really going to regret in five or 10 years, maybe, maybe 15 years. Let's say that. But I really would like to know how many, how many properties Thomas James Homes has in the pipeline.
Is that a question for the applicant or for?
Asking, oh, I'm sorry, through the chair to staff.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, do you happen to know?
I actually, do you think this might be a better question for the applicant? I know we have a few use permit projects in the pipeline. I want to say about two or three additional use permits. And then a couple other building permits that do not trigger a use permit discretionary review. But I couldn't give you a number off the top of my head, so I think it may be a better question for the applicant.
Ms. Felver, would you care to take a shot at that?
We do have three projects that are going through and use permit. I would say we'd have another three to five projects before the end of the year as well. That would be a guess at what's coming down the pipeline. And again, if, if there's, I know we have a, a modern style that's actually being reviewed in design round one. So it has a different aesthetic to it. And I believe that we have other ones that come in with more craftsman styles. So we do have a variety of, of styles that we can offer on these homes. So if farmhouse is getting tiresome, we are more than welcome to explore modern styles and making sure that we're providing variety in the community.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have other questions from the Commission at this time? We'll have another chance for comments. Seeing none, I would now like to open a public comment on this application. And Mr. Pruder, I believe you said we did have a couple of people standing by for public comment?
Yes, I apologize earlier for that error, Chair Doran, but yes, we have two currently with their hands remaining raised. And I can introduce one at a time for you if you'd like me to do so at this time.
Please do.
Yes, thank you. The first commenter I see on my screen is a person by the name of Sarah Ordaz. So Sarah, I'm going to, and at that time you'll have three minutes to begin your public comment. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for your time. I'm concerned about the heritage tree ordinance violation on page two of the College Ave staff report. Do you want me to read through the text that's relevant or have you, shall I assume everyone's read it? I'm new to this.
It's up to you. You've got two hours and two minutes and 37 seconds now.
Oh, I hope I don't have two hours. Okay, um, the applicant is proposing to remove two heritage street trees during the course of the review. This, I'm paraphrasing, city arborist directed the applicant to conduct exploratory trenching to explore how the proposed driveway might impact the root system. Upon analysis of the trench, it was determined that the root system was not as extensive as previously thought and the driveway could be built with alternative construction methods to mitigate impacts to the trees. However, upon subsequent site visit, it was discovered that the trenches were not refilled, causing a decline in the health of the street trees, which is considered a violation of the heritage tree ordinance. The city arborist determined that the construction close to the trees would most likely lead to further decline in the tree's health, causing a need for the tree's removal. And then in the subsequent paragraph, it indicates basically that the developer was asked to put in a larger replacement tree than is normal, but was not assessed the fine, which as you know is $5,000. And so I'm curious, it seems like this is a nice little loophole. I'm not sure, I'm curious if staff have data about how often this developer or has violated the heritage tree ordinance and what sort of consequences were? Did they suffer?
Thank you. Could you just state your name and political jurisdiction or address for the record, please?
Yeah, Sarah Ordaz. I don't, I live in downtown Menlo Park in Betsy Nash's district.
Thank you. We have to stay in public comment now, but I'm sure that the Commission will take this up during our comments in a moment. So, Mr. Pruder, we have one other public comment?
Yes, that is correct. At the moment, we still have one remaining public commenter. So with your permission, I'll introduce the second public commenter for this project.
Please.
Thank you. We have someone by the name of Rob Jordan. And Rob Jordan, if you could please, as stated previously, state your name and jurisdiction or address at the beginning as you introduce yourself. I'm going to give you permission now to speak, so you should be able to begin your public comment. Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, thank you for the chance to speak. And I would very much echo what Ms. Ordaz just said. And while my concern and comment is specific to the use permit for 760 College Avenue, I think it also goes to the heart of a larger issue regarding what makes our community desirable. And I'm sorry, at the outset, I should have mentioned, I live in West Menlo Park. So on Alchel Avenue, so technically unincorporated Menlo Park. I too with concerns after reading not only by the violations and the, the lack of, you know, particular penalty, but just kind of the larger sense that it's the heritage tree ordinance doesn't seem to be carrying much weight, certainly in this use permit example, but also did a little bit of larger data research with the help of council member Betsy Nash. And it's my understanding that over the past 12 years, there have been something on the order of 476 applications for heritage tree removals. And that's not necessarily concerning in and of itself, but of that 188 were development-related. Of those 188, only three were denied. And so that means almost 99% of all development-related heritage tree removal applications were granted. And certainly there are good reasons to remove these trees, such as poor health. And I'm not here to cast dispersions on Thomas James or any other developer, but it does seem like that number is, is one that should give us pause. And certainly seems worth discussing what the purpose of heritage tree ordinance is if you have a 99% chance of having your request to remove a heritage tree removed. I appreciate your, your work on behalf of the community and I appreciate the chance to speak.
Thank you. Do we have any other hands raised?
Yes, Chair Doran, we do have one additional hand raised. As a reminder for the public, if anyone else would like to speak, I'd just like to add that you can choose the hand icon or press star nine if you're calling by phone. We have a phone number that obviously is some person and then I can introduce you them as well.
Please do.
The person's phone number is 650 area code number. If you could please share your name and state your jurisdiction or address at the beginning of your comment, I'm going to allow you to speak. So the one who is on this phone call, please do those items. Once I've introduced you, you may begin speaking now. The 650 area code number, you have permission to speak. If you may unmute your phone, you should be able to speak at this time. And again, please state your name and jurisdiction. And the first three digits I will add, 650 area code and 460 is the first three digits of the phone number following the area code. And I'm just awaiting their unmuting, which is up to them. So hopefully they'll be able to speak soon.
I take it we don't have any other hands raised or anyone else waiting to speak that we could go to next?
We do not. There is only this one hand at the moment.
No, they may have stepped away from the phone. Yeah, I think we need to move on.
Okay, with your permission, I, I see no other commenters by phone or by Zoom with their raised hands at this time.
Hello?
Oh.
Hello? Yeah. Sorry. The Zoom was having a hard time unmuting me. My name is Jonathan Abel. I'm the neighbor at, of the 760 College Avenue house. And I just wanted to comment relative to the tree. You know, having, having taken, you know, a look over what had happened, you know, well, essentially I wanted to understand if there's any way that that tree could be saved. The tree is on the, roughly on the property line between our, our two houses. And it's a tree I enjoy. And I know that there's a, there are a couple houses that are nearby that have similar magnolia trees. One of them is a sort of a similar design where there's a two-car garage. And their driveway actually starts out sort of like a one-car drive, driveway and expands to make room for the magnolia tree that they have on their property, kind of in a similar space. Across the street and just down one over, there's a similar accommodation made by the driveway to allow the drive, excuse me, to allow the driveway to scoot around the tree. So that it seems like the trees are doing fine there. And I would, you know, anyway, I just would you know, I would like to understand if it's possible to at least try to something to work to save that, to save that tree, which I quite enjoy. And that I think adds to the neighborhood. Thanks for letting me comment.
Thank you. Mr. Pruder, do we have any other hands raised now?
At this time, I see no other hands or phone numbers that have a hand raised. So with your permission, I say that we could close the public comment period at this time.
Yeah, let's close public comment and bring it back to the commission for their comments. We have commissioners who would like to speak on this application. Don't be shy. I know you have a lot to say. Mr. DeCarty.
Yeah, I guess I would lean into the tree question a little bit. So through the chair to staff, just to understand the sequencing of what happened with the trenches and the two trees. And then the question about both replacement and the fine. So I suppose my question is, was the heritage tree ordinance, which I know has been updated recently, accurately applied in this situation? And if it was accurately applied, at whose discretion is the choice between the measures of replacement at what size or a fine or both?
Right. So to, to start off, to give some little bit of background on the trees, the initial plan was to keep the trees. When the applicants originally submitted back in December, the trees were two remained and the driveway was going to go between the two trees. In the first round of review, the city arborist noted that he believed that the impacts to the trees from the driveway would be pretty significant. And sort of advised the applicants to redesign, to maybe move the driveway somewhere else in order to retain those two trees. It was the applicant's, you know, desire to, to keep the driveway as is. And the city arborist said they could do, suggested they do exploratory trenching to determine where the root system of those trees were. To get a better understanding of just how impactful the driveway might be. And if there could be a way to design around those trees, leaving the driveway in the same place. So the applicants did that. And the result of the, the trenching actually showed that the root system was not as extensive as the city arborist thought, which is a bit surprising, but it, it came out that there could be a way to, you know, via certain design or certain construction methods, build the driveway in that location without being too impactful to those trees and being able to retain them. So at a, the city arborist had to go to the property to analyze the, a couple of the onsite heritage trees. And at that time, that's when he discovered that the trenches were left open. And by that time, it had been about a month that the, the reeds had been exposed. And it appeared that the, the trees had declined because of that, because of the, the roots being left exposed. So he determined that if the applicant was to continue with the current design, the driveway would now be too impactful to the declined trees to, to retain. So at that point, there is the we had one of two routes, it's either redesign the house or apply for the heritage tree removal permits for, on a development basis, development-related basis, which is the route they, the applicants chose to go. As far as the the heritage tree removal permit process, everything was done in accordance to the heritage tree ordinance, the new ordinance. So the applicants provided alternate designs. They provided the valuation of the heritage trees. And it is the discretion of the city arborist when it comes to the, the violation, how to implement that. So he didn't, he determined that in lieu of the, the fee or fine for the for the violation, the applicants could plant bigger replacement trees. Generally, when heritage trees are being removed for development purposes, you have to replace the, the value of the trees. So the city arborist determined that the replanting of the, of the larger trees would be more than the value of the trees that would have needed to be replaced based on the value of the existing heritage trees. But it was less than the fine. And he, he deemed that appropriate for the, the site.
Thank you for that. Through the chair, follow-up question?
Yes, of course.
So I guess, uh, one direction here, just to understand, if a member of the community is dissatisfied with that outcome, which is at the discretion of the arborist, is there an appeal opportunity and to what body? Or is in the application of the new heritage tree ordinance, is that a final decision?
Right, so when heritage tree removal permits are, are approved on the basis of development, there is an appeal period, an appeal process standard fifteen days similar to to the planning commission appeal period. That decision is appealed to the EQC, the Environmental Quality Commission, who can either deny the appeal and uphold the approval or vice versa, they can they can accept the denial or the appeal and therefore denying the removal of the trees. That decision can be appealed then to the city council. So there is a process of appeals. In this case, we did not receive any appeals of the, of the decision. So at that time, the permit approvals deemed final.
Okay. Thank you on that. And then just for clarification, the trees we're talking about are trees four and five. Is that correct?
I believe so. Let me double check the numbering. Yes, trees four and five.
And then I, I guess to the last person in public comment, I wanted to know, he referred to a tree being on the property line near the driveway that's a magnolia. By process of elimination, is that tree five? Or can we clarify on that? And is, are those two trees still standing or have they been taken down?
I believe he was talking about tree number five. It's roughly in between the two properties, but it is in the public right of way and the city tree. And then to my knowledge, I believe the trees are still there.
Okay, so to review on that, the position of the city arborist is that both of those trees now have been so severely damaged because of root exposure that they are no longer viable. They're going to die essentially. And so in this development, the remediation is to bring trees four and five down and then to have those two sixty gallon trees, which will be at slightly different orientations on the property. Do I kind of have that summarized?
Generally, yes. The, the city arborist, I think it's his, his opinion that the trees could survive if the, if no development is done, if, if there's no driveway there, they can kind of be saved. But if if the development goes forward, they'll be too severely impacted, impacted to, to retain.
Okay, that's super helpful. It gets to all the comment from Mr. Jordan, which was extraordinarily helpful about what tends to happen in these situations. So then, could we not ask that this driveway be put in a different orientation or constructed in a different way in order to protect both trees or perhaps the magnolia tree, the larger one that's at the property line that's in question? And would that then allow one or both of those trees to stay?
Yes. Since the, since the heritage tree removal permit was approved on the basis of development, if the, if the, if the development doesn't happen, should the commission decide to say, deny a permit or continue it with the direction to change the orientation to, to move the driveway in a way that could be retained? The heritage tree removal permit essentially is, is null because the development that it was based on would no longer be happening.
All right, that's helpful. I, I know I'm taking a bunch of time. Maybe I'm doing a service to question some other members. Can I now ask the applicant one question along this line of thinking? Or I'm also happy to defer to somebody else, Chair Dorn.
No, no, please do. I think you're doing us a service.
Okay. So Ms. Felver, thank you first for the presentation. Really appreciated. It was detailed. You've heard this exchange in a whole bunch of ways. I'd just be interested in your reflections on where we are in this conversation and if you have any thoughts in, in this mix.
Yes, there was extensive conversation that went back and forth with the city arborist. So a little brief on that. The violation was for street trees four and five. Yes, we did make a mistake. We didn't cover the analysis that we did, the root analysis. So we have changed our process. We are not ma- making this air again to make sure it doesn't happen. We will be less than twenty-four hours, making sure that we put dirt over our analysis when we, when we do exploratory root analysis for the city arborist. Four and five was something we explored with the driveway now that we got into these trees being damaged and seeing how can we still retain them. We originally were trying to save them and do a different construction method with the driveway and, and have them slant in and make sure that we could give clearances for both the trees. And now since we were damaged the trees, it was either keep the driveway there, look at another location. That other location would, would have impact on other street trees. So in order to save the trees on Blake Street and make sure we don't impact those trees anymore, that we decided to keep that driveway on College Street and make sure that we, of course, we had the consequences of, of larger replacement trees in order to make up for the trees that were damaged. There was another tree in as a concern, tree number seven, that is right now on the fence line, but within our property lines. Tree number seven is a bay laurel. It's also on the right side that would affect the neighbor and possibly one of the trees that he is concerned about, whether that's tree five or seven. It wasn't too clear, but that tree we did exploratory trenching for. And that one would have a huge, new development anywhere on the site would have a huge impact on this tree. And so in order to retain the tree, we'd have to, the buildable area ended up being sixteen percent of the lot, which was not feasible. And we did an alternate design, tried to figure out how much square footage we could still get with this tree being retained and how to protect it. And it ended up not being a buildable area that was feasible for us to, to design on and to develop. So we submitted that analysis and that exhibit. And unfortunately, that, that tree was not able to be saved and needed to be removed in order for any new development to be on that site.
Okay. Um, and you're right, thank you for that. First of all, thank you for being very clear that it was your mistake and, and how you're working to make sure that doesn't happen again. Appreciate that. On this and as you're exploring options, I, it sounded like you were exploring options to, to essentially preserve both trees four and five. That would mean in this situation, putting the driveway somewhere else, put it somewhere else, it creates other problems for other trees, I think is what you were saying. Did you look at an option that would protect or save tree five but not tree four? That you would just essentially slide the driveway in some kind of way so that one of those could be saved?
We had a, a discussion with the city arborist and it was from that conversation that both trees would not be able to survive with, with any driveway impact over there.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. I've, I've got all sorts of opinions. I'm going to save my opinions. I was just trying to understand the facts on this and I will, I'll now stand down and let other commissioners speak for a while. Thanks for letting me ask all of those things, everybody.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak this time? Mr. Riggs?
Yeah, thank you. I had made some initial notes and with thanks to Commissioner DeCarty, have additional information and thanks to the applicant as well, from which I would like to ask a couple of follow-up questions. And maybe the, well, to get right to the crux, may I confirm, Ms. Felver, that the trenches were cut on both sides? That is the left edge of the driveway proposed and the right edge of the proposed driveway?
Can you, can you repeat that? The trenches were?
The location of your analysis trenches would have been on the left edge of the proposed driveway and the right edge of the proposed driveway. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And it was determined that that area dried out as a result of the open trench. But then it was first noted that there were no significant roots in that area. And I guess I would presume that after the trenches were cut, one could guarantee that between the two trenches, there were no roots, at least in the upper portion of the soil, because they would have been cut. But it seems they weren't there. So I'm trying to follow, and I don't mean to put you on the spot for someone else's logic, but you may have insight why at this point, after the trenching that would have been or could have been harmful to the trees has already been accomplished. The city arborist has indicated, well, if no construction proceeded, we could probably save the trees. But unfortunately, construction, construction is going to proceed. But construction is not going to build a driveway anywhere except between the two trenches where there are no roots. So at this point, the trenches having been made, it seems to me the ideal place to build a driveway. And as long as you didn't excavate to the left and to the right of the trenches, which I'm sure you didn't intend to do, or you wouldn't have trenched in those locations, I'm sort of at a loss to understand why there is any difference between construction proceeding there is any difference between construction proceeding and construction being canceled in terms of being able to save the tree. And I pursue this to ask what you might know of this conclusion because over the course of thirty years, I've seen trees that were in poor health as part of a construction project be brought back to health, including one rather amazing pepper tree in San Jose on Jackson that was presumed to have no more than one season left on its life. And within, well frankly, by the close of construction of the project, it was already twice its size. So so with that very long surround of words, can you shed any light on this this conclusion?
Yeah, I I mean, trees are all different in their health and their location and not being a arborist myself, but looking to our own arborists that we hire in the city arborist for those recommendations. Within that conversation we had with the city arborist, they were damaged to a point of his analysis. When he went out on site, it was damaged to a point that he recommended the trees to be removed and not go down the path of slanting the driveway and doing different construction methods and trying to revive the trees. So that's where that conversation ends.
All right, thank you so much. And through the chair, may I ask a question of Mr. Turner?
Is of course.
So, Mr. Turner, I would you just confirm that the city arborist indicated that absent construction, he felt that the trees could be brought back or maintained?
That was my understanding. Our city arborist went on leave, so there's quite a bit of discussion around that, but that was my impression from discussions back in roughly June and July was that if no construction happened, the trees could remain.
All right, thank you. And then I guess in in terms of managing this the process over the last two months, has any water been given either to the trees or to adjacent landscaping over the summer? I guess I would ask that of Ms. Felver.
I'd have to look into that. I do not know the answer to that at the moment, but I can find out. Most likely, if we got approval to remove and went through the appeal process, we wouldn't have continued to maintain them. But I would need to check.
So I regret that I did not check, did not think to check the trees myself. All right, thank you. I will let other people ask questions and we'll bring a proposal on the trees a bit later. Thank you.
Could I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I add something? Thank you. I just wanted to clarify the new tree ordinance, you know, and I appreciate the discussion here, but just one thing to consider through the new ordinance, it's it's set up that the review of the trees for development is done before it goes to planning commission. And neighbors are sent a notice, I think it's a three hundred foot radius, so they do have the opportunity to appeal to the EQC before a project goes to the planning commission. And and so the way that's set up, I think the focus of the planning commission is meant to be more of the other aspects of the project and not the trees. Where it's meant to be, the review of the trees is meant to be done upfront. And it's it was meant to be more comprehensive than the previous reviews where alternatives are reviewed, the cost of alternatives. And it's noticed and the public has that opportunity. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeCarty, you've got your hand raised.
Thank you. I have a question from Ms. Sandmeyer on that explanation. So is one way I got it, absent, so we're not the tree people. Having served on the Environmental Quality Commission and been frustrated with the old heritage tree ordinance, I'm well aware of all of this. So if we had jurisdiction to say that actually we'd like to work to have that driveway in a different place, another way of saying this is we could put the driveway in a different place. And it is already done so that the developer has the opportunity to take down trees four and five, no matter what we determine this evening. Is that another way to say that?
Well, not entirely. So there is a condition on the removal permit that they the trees cannot be removed until a building permit is issued for that design that requires the removal. But I believe the way the new heritage tree ordinance is set up, the intention is not for the planning commission to deny a project because of the trees. It's set up that if the planning commission denies a project or conditions it for the design to change. And then because of that, the trees no longer need to be removed, that they that they would be saved or that they wouldn't be removed unnecessarily. But the focus would be for the planning commission to deny or condition the project for other reasons. I don't know if that hopefully that clarifies.
Well, it does, except for the information that we have. There's just a complete circular logic in this that is happening right now, which puts us in a pretty untenable position as a planning commission. We've got a city arborist who's essentially said that with the current development, the trees can't stay, but if the driveway wasn't put in, the trees might live. So who's got the right to engage in that? That's not a that's not an EQC question. So help me, I you helped me understand as a planning commission, where is that determination finalized then?
Well, so it's reviewed by the city arborist. So he reviewed alternatives and there's cost thresholds in the ordinance. And then if a member of the public or anyone else disagrees with that, they can appeal it to the EQC. So I think it is an EQC EQC decision. They would be given all the information about the costs and alternatives and so forth. And then they would review it. And then after that, the project would go to the planning commission.
Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Kennedy, you've got your hand raised. You're on mute.
I am on mute. I would like to ask a clarifying question through the chair to staff.
Sure.
Are are there other instances of this this applicant having issues around heritage trees that are similar to what we're seeing tonight?
Um, there's none that I'm aware of, but I mean, there may have been in the past that I'm not aware of, but yeah, not not that I'm aware of.
Do we have other commissioners that would like to speak at this time? Commissioner Harris?
Thank you. I just have one more clarifying question. So trees four and five, it says are worth around three thousand dollars. I just wanted to make sure I understand that in lieu of a five thousand dollar fine, they the applicant would then be putting in a tree that's worth three thousand dollars or that's worth more than that. I'm I'm a little or that's worth eight thousand dollars. And how how big is that tree? I'm just trying to get a better understanding of that. So through the chair, I guess my question is for okay.
Right, so so under normal circumstances, excuse me, when a when a heritage tree removal permit is approved for development, they would be required to replace the value of the tree or trees, the sum of the value of the trees. So if this was a normal circumstance, the applicants would be required to replace five thousand dollars worth of trees. And there that's based on the size of the tree. So there's different, like a fifteen gallon or twenty-four inch box, sixty inch box, et cetera. That's what the replacement value is is based on. So in this case, I I believe the standard fine for a heritage tree ordinance violation, I believe, is ten thousand dollars. So the cost of the replacement, which is two sixty and sixty inch box trees, is between the roughly five thousand dollars for the replacement. If it was a a normal circumstance and the ten thousand dollar fine.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe Ms. Felver would like to speak further on the the trees and what's what they're using to replace these trees?
Yeah, those would be, there's one sixty inch London plane tree on College Street. And then there's one off of Blake Street. We went through several exhibits to to make sure that we're not hurting other street trees and that we're away from street signs and curves and driveways. And there's a lot of different items that we need and elements that we have to be a certain distance from. And we we were given an exhibit to to show us how many feet near a sign, how many feet near another tree. And we had our civil engineer create a diagram to make sure we had approval from the city arborist on those locations in order for it to be an appropriate replacement.
Thank you.
And we had an alternative design that we did explore and submit to the city arborist. But there were exhibits that have been documented that show the garage and the driveway along Blake Street, not College, to show, hey, this is what will be impacted if we do a different design. And that would impact tree twelve, the street tree, which wouldn't be impacted if we had the driveway on College Street. And that's even with a smaller driveway, that gets larger for the two car garage.
Thank you. I've got a question. I think it's probably for Ms. Sandmeyer. I share, I sense some frustration from the commission here that I share that we we seem to be in a position where you know, nobody can do anything. And that's kind of that's really not a very comfortable feeling. And I guess part of the part of the problem is caused by the city arborist being on leave now, as I understand. Can we continue this application? Pining for other investigation into whether these trees can be saved so that we have more definitive input on their current health at the time we make a decision on this application?
I suppose, yeah, we could do that. I think it may be helpful to hear from the applicant. They're agreeable to that.
Ms. Felver?
Yes, we're agreeable to that. Again, we've gone through three or four months of these studies. So if we need to we've we've done the new construction method at the driveway, so and did all those changes to slant the driveway. So I'm not sure if going back would even be an option because we we've tried to submit that option before and it was denied. And but we're we're willing to, of course, continue and make sure that we look at it again. See what the city arborist would say.
Thank you. I might ask Commissioner Riggs for his thoughts. He seems to be one of the better informed about trees on the commission. Your line of questioning a few minutes ago was along the lines of you know, the trenches would have been dug in a place where the driveway would go and the arborist thought that that the trees could actually survive the driveway in that location. So I suppose if we were going to continue the application, the question would be are the trees still healthy enough for that? I don't know if you have thoughts on that, Commissioner Riggs. Does this make, does this make sense to you?
Yes. Mr. Chair, it does. It's, I think it's a bit awkward that we've come to this point where we have public objections, but they don't come forward until there's a hearing. And you know, this is the hearing. And I think that's perhaps why in the past, the planning commission finalized tree removal permits. They were conditional on a planning on a use permit application for years, as I recall. In fact, it seems to me until about last year. But we're here now. And I don't think we can make a good recommendation without verifying if the trees can still be revived. A rule of thumb on root removal for trees that I've heard for some years is that you can remove one third of the root structure in any given season. But presumably, you would do it for three seasons in a row. I I would suspect that no more than one third of the root structure would be facing the driveway, but I could be wrong. One would think that a trench might dry out the soil within twelve inches of the trench. But you wouldn't really expect that it would dry out the entire drip line. Since there's a great deal of top surface area to soil, you know, as opposed to an eighteen inch trench or twenty-four inch trench, whatever it was. So I I think it's worth checking. And with the applicant seeming to be amenable, if we could get a read, if not from Mr. Bonner, if from in the past, we've always had the availability of a consulting arborist. And or perhaps the applicant would be willing to bring their arborist back for an opinion whether the trees can be saved. So I think that the opportunity here is rather than to spend five thousand dollars on replacement trees, for which I have a a separate opinion and perhaps a comment later. To be able to water these trees, add organic nutrition and see them revive in the spring would be certainly much more rewarding for the neighborhood and I think a better use of resources. And it does appear, if I'm making my conclusions correctly, that at this point, the construction of the driveway is not going to be relevant to the tree, which is going to enter its dormant stage within a matter of weeks anyway. So I think a delay until we can get some information would would be very useful. And at this time, perhaps we could just give any indication from from this group if there are any other issues on the project since we've all gathered around this first one. So that if the project does come back in four to six weeks, we will only have the one issue to discuss. If that makes sense to my fellow commissioners.
Now, that makes a lot of sense to me. I I'm concerned about these trees. I don't have other objections to the application, but I'd see what other commissioners have to say on the rest of the application. I'm not hearing anyone, so I assume that that means that they don't have other concerns. I would like to ask Mr. Turner or possibly Ms. Sandmeyer. Um, I would like to ask Mr. Turner or possibly Ms. Sandmeyer. Um, with city arborist, uh, on leave, do we have, you know, suitable backup? I mean, is there a consulting arborist or some other arrangement that uh, the city can look to for an opinion on this?
We do, um, we, we have a consulting, um, arborist firm. Um, they work with us even, um, when our city arborist is here. So she's still on, uh, consulting for us in the city arborist, um, capacity. And we, I believe we, um, have an additional consultant, um, to help her out and while while our city arborist is on leave.
Thank you. In that case, um, I'd like to see if someone would like to make a motion. Anyone like to move to continue the application?
I'll, I'll move that we, uh, continue the application to give, uh, our consulting city arborist an opportunity to evaluate the current state of the trees and the possible opportunity to save them. And I think it's worth asking, um, to confirm my, um, armchair conclusion that, uh, with the trenches already dug, uh, the creation of the doc, of the driveway would not be particularly impactful. Um, I say that with some faith because, uh, the southern magnolia is a, uh, planted in this environment as a rather aggressive and strong tree. And, um, I would I, I have some optimism that, that this is, is worth the effort. So I'd like to, uh, uh, move that, um, continuation. Um, and if I could, I'd also just like to make a couple of comments that, um, you know, to be responsive to the, um, letter writers regarding the project. Um, there's issues of compatible design raised. I, I have to say that this kind of design, um, in our neighborhoods of ranch homes and mixed homes is by no means the worst style or the worst massing that we could see. And while I can understand if, if you've seen two or three of them at planning commission, you could be, um, wishing for something else. Um, the alternatives aren't necessarily better, and at least if, uh, one of these goes on per block, you can't say that there are, are eight in a row. Um, so I would hate to insert, uh, the planning commission's objection to this particular style. I actually find this particular one, uh, an attractive design. Um, a- and then, um, I would like to comment on the outreach, uh, although there was no response documented. Uh, I guess, uh, one can, uh, invite people to come and make comment, but you can't make them come and make comment. And if I understand from the staff report, um, the outreach was at least made in the outgoing direction. So I, I hope that at least indicates our response to the questions that do come in. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion to continue. Uh, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you. So call the role, Commissioner DeCarty?
Hi.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. So the motion to continue carries six zero. Mr. Barnes absent. So the next item, uh, on our agenda is, uh, an application for use permit, uh, at one fifty-three Oak Court. This is a request for use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence with an attached garage and construct a new two-story residence with an attached garage on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width and area in the R one U, single-family urban residential zoning district. Uh, we have a staff report from Mr. Paz. Is Mr. Paz here? Do you have anything to add to the staff report or any updates?
I believe, uh, there's no updates to the staff report. There was an item of correspondence that did go to the commission, so wanted to uh, raise awareness to that. It was a additional photos from the neighbor at one four nine Oak Court. Clarifying, uh, some of, uh, their concerns regarding the placement of the, the second story. And, uh, with that, I have no further updates to the staff report. I'm available to answer questions if there are clarifying questions at this time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Paz at this time? Looks like we do not. So I'd like to, uh, call on the applicant or the representatives of the applicant, uh, to make any presentation or any remarks that they care to make.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, then can everybody hear Lindsay, who's the architect?
Hi, everyone.
I'm assuming Lindsay has control over the presentation right now? Yeah, looks like it. Okay. Awesome. Um, good evening, Chair and Planning Commission members. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present our plans tonight, and I would also like to say hello to my neighbors on the call. My name is Anka De Jong. I'm a long-term resident of Menlo Park. And as a designer with a strong interest in architecture, I've long held a wish to build a well-designed home to improve my overall living experience. And by that I mean more light, more space. So that friends and family from the Netherlands can actually come and stay in my house rather than in a hotel. More storage and a better layout with a good flow. Ever since Michelle Kaufman introduced modern quality, you know, modern high-quality prefab, I've been a big fan of this type of construction. So that's what we've chosen for this project. Prefab is not new to the neighborhood. Uh, there have been several large installs nearby. And it's definitely doable. And with that, I would like to introduce Lindsay, who works for a prefab company called Plant Prefab.
Hi, everyone, uh, honorable board members. Uh, my name is Lindsay McLaughlin. I am an, I, I am a licensed architect, uh, for Plant Prefab. Uh, we collaborate with outside architects, but we also have our own internal design staff. Um, Plant builds custom and standard high-quality projects. The factory team fabricates panels and/or modules in a controlled factory environment that come together on site in collaboration with a site general contractor. It, uh, generally reduces the impact on the neighborhood in terms of noise, traffic and construction time. And our homes typically exceed Title twenty-four Cal Green requirements by ten percent at least is our goal, usually. And the team at the factory brings material precision and recycling to each project, which reduces the overall waste produced by construction.
So the project is located in Oak Court, which of course is very familiar to my neighbors, but maybe not to all of you. Um, it's a quiet neighborhood in the Willows. Two-story residences are not unusual in the neighborhood. Um, there happen to be four across the street, three of which have been added since I moved here. And it seems to be the norm these days for any, you know, new construction nearby. There are heritage trees, speaking of trees, in the previous presentation, there are heritage trees in front of the house. They're beautiful. And I definitely like to protect them. And we have a plan in place by, you know, created by a licensed arborist and checked by the city to make sure nothing bad happens to them during construction. And the plus side of having these trees in front of the house is that they're, you know, uh, bountiful crowns will also screen the small second story, which has a large setback from the front.
And this is the existing house. Uh, it's a nineteen fifty-nine ranch-style home, less than a thousand square feet. It has a single-car garage and two small bedrooms and a small living area. Uh, generally, the construction and materials are not up to, not up to today's standards. And the layout is not optimal for Anka and, um, her friends and family.
Next slide. So this slide shows what the zoning requirements are in, in my area. So the picture on the bottom right shows what you're allowed to build, uh, on my lot. Um, it's basically, you can build up to twenty-eight foot high and with a setback of like minimum setback of like five feet on the left and the right and twenty feet, you know, in the front and the back. Um, if you look at the picture in the upper right-hand corner, you can see that what we're proposing to build is very modest compared to like what you can build. And I'd also like to point out that like most new construction that I'm aware of in the area, just take advantage of like the larger building envelope. But from the start, I wanted to, um, be mindful of the potential impact on neighbors and neighborhood. And I chose not to maximize the floor space, even though, um, I am also, you know, not immune to the lure of like giant, like walk-in closets. We are also, um, inset from the required front side and rear yard setbacks.
And the design includes a central courtyard with a tree, a new tree. Um, it includes roof planter tiles and an entry garden to create a connection to the natural landscape. Uh, there is no access to the second floor outdoor areas, which was also important to the neighbors for privacy reasons. Those are the two heritage trees out in front that we're keeping and protecting.
Yeah. So here you see the, basically, the front and the back of the house. Um, the style is like contemporary, uh, clean, simple lines. In terms of like size and materials, like we chose those to connect to the neighborhood, um, with wood siding and a mauve accent color that is pretty subtle. On the upper level, uh, we will be using paneling to make the vertical planes aesthetically pleasing and to visually break up the massing.
Okay, these are the side yard elevations. There is a tall existing fence that goes around the property. And we are also adding more plants and trees to the property with the input of the landscape architect, arborist and the neighbors. Um, the windows generally are placed high up. Um, they're clear story, generally speaking, on the sides facing the neighbors. Um, they're above one's head to optimize lighting rather than views.
So this is like a three D view of like, um, where you can see in the middle, the entry garden and gate. It's a bit more playful, didn't just having like a, you know, just a flat flush front. Um, there is flush wood siding on the garage. So the garage is not as dominant as when you have one of those, um, segmented doors with glass in it. Um, the clear story windows above the front door give you a view through the main area of the house to the rear yard. And the small second-story primary suite has a pretty prominent window to give the house a bit of character.
And then by setting back the second-story portion of, of the project, it has less of an impact on the two neighbors on either side and on the tree scape out in front. So this is the view, uh, in the stair hallway looking out through the front window box. And, uh, the, the box, the window box will be made from jumbo glass or similar structural glass. And it is located about sixty feet from the road behind the heritage trees.
So last but not least, a free diagram of the project with some of the, uh, more important design considerations. Uh, it points out the, um, clear story windows on both sides of the you know, second floor of the house so that my neighbors will have privacy because there's no way I can see out of windows that are more than six foot high. Um, there's an existing privacy fence, of course, and there will be new trees between me and my east neighbors that will basically screen the second story, um, from their view. There will be a central courtyard with a new tree, uh, to replace, uh, an old plum tree that, uh, sadly died. Um, and then, and basically that patio aligns with the neighbor's patio, so they won't all of a sudden have like this this wall behind the fence next, right next to the area, you know, where they have like a small patio. Um, we already talked about the preservation of the heritage trees. Um, there's also clear story windows in the front. And there's sort of like, um, the big window in the front will have plants behind it. So it will have a nice kind of like, um, green look to it when you walk by. So, in my personal opinion, this project strikes an appropriate balance between, you know, people's requirements around housing today, which I think, uh, is in line with like the typical, you know, four-bedroom free bath that seems to be the norm for all new construction around here. Um, and minimizing the impact on the neighborhood. And that's the end of our presentation, and I would like to thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Um, I think we can entertain clarifying questions from the commission, but we should save comments uh, until after we've had public comment. Anyone have a clarifying question for the applicant? I'm not seeing any. Uh, so Mr. Turner, I'd like to open it up for, uh, public com, sorry, Mr. Pruder. Uh, I'd like to open it up for public comment. If we have any, uh,
Mr. Chair, I did have a, a question, actually.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Um, fairly straightforward. I'm just curious, uh, about the living roof. What the goal is, because creating a living roof is, um, a very significant expense um, in home construction.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so, uh, they have these things called planter tiles now. And so you're not building like a bathtub on the roof with all the, you know, three feet of soil. It's actually like a, a thin planter tile. Uh, it's a proprietary product. And it makes it, it's lighter. It, it rests on the, on the roof with some irrigation that goes through these tiles.
And how that we call these kind of roofs, like grass roofs? I mean, translated, of course. Um, they're pretty popular and for two reasons mainly that like they're aesthetically more pleasing than like gravel and tar paper. And also that they retain moisture and, you know, also help with insulation.
Um, yes, I'm aware of those, uh, advantages. Thermally, they can be quite beneficial in a, in a warm climate, climate. But perhaps I misread your plans. I didn't see any place, uh, in your home from which you can see the roof.
Um, well, it's more like, I think you can see it when you're outside and my neighbors do like, well, I mean, my neighbor on the on the west side will definitely have a nice green view and she's sitting on her patio.
Okay. Go ahead, thank you.
You're welcome.
If there are no further questions from the commission, uh, we'd like to move to public comment. Uh, Mr. Pruder, do we have hands raised?
Oh, again, Chair Dorn, thank you. There is a hand raise as a reminder for members of the public, if anyone would like to have a comment provided for this item, uh, they're welcome to raise their hand, uh, by pressing the hand icon, or if they are calling by telephone, um, pressing star nine. It appears we have a phone call-in listener who is requesting to speak. And with your permission, I can grant them access to speak at this time.
Yeah, I'd just like to remind this, the, uh, speaker to state their name for the record and their address or political jurisdiction where they live. Thanks.
Thank you for that, Chair Dorn. Um, so at this time, I'm going to give, uh, speaking capabilities for the phone, uh, starting with nine four nine three three one. You are now allowed to speak. And if you could again, as Chair Dorn stated, please And if you could again, as Chair Dorn stated, please say your name and or address and address and or political jurisdiction. Thank you. You should be able to unmute your phone. You'll have.
Hello. Hello, everyone. Uh, my name's Wes Liu, one of the owners of uh one twenty four Oak Court across the street from the proposed uh development. Um, I would just like to uh voice my support in uh this uh excellent design. I personally reviewed it. Um, I think it will add a lot of great modern touch to this neighborhood. Um, and I'm very impressed to see that not only uh, you know, it's great design, but you know, energy efficient, but also um will maintain a lot of the the heritage trees are great character for the neighborhood. So uh congratulations to the owner and the architects. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other speakers, other public comments, Mr. Pruder?
At this time, I don't see any other uh public speakers raising their hand or by phone up. I apologize. I do see one uh another individual. They have raised their hand. Uh, so with your permission, I can have that person uh be able to speak as well.
Yes, please.
Yes, we have a person by the name of Anna. I'm going to allow you to speak, Anna, and at this time uh you may begin your public comment and please provide your name, which I believe is Anna, and your jurisdiction and or address. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anna. Um, I live in the Willows. I'm a neighbor of Anke. Um, so I I've been in touch with Anke several times um and I I since been doing a lot of work to make it really private or try to address the privacy issues. I especially wanted to ask um that rooftop area that Anke start like um, right now you cannot access there anymore. Um, I just wanted to per the letter I I sent over um to ensure that if the house were sold to someone who's not as private as Anke is, um, that that would be now possible uh for a future owner to access that area and just invade the privacy of all the neighbors by setting like chairs in um, I don't know, a staging area up up there. Um, that's one thing that I I wanted to raise and um um, and just uh also wanted to ensure that um everybody in the neighborhood um felt comfortable with that. And I had a couple of other things in the letter regarding making sure that the cause the truck can make make it through the street without damaging the existing trees because there will be a prefab house that has to be moving into um the property and um wanting to ensure that there will be no damage of road or 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 trees. And I think the architect was looking into that. And that's um probably it. And there were some, some, that's what I wanted to talk. Okay.
Thank you. Do we have any other uh speakers for public comment, Mr. Pruder?
I do not see any other speakers at this time uh by phone or by uh raising their hand. So if you'd like, we can close the public comment period or wait a little longer.
Um, I think uh people had enough notice since we've had a couple of speakers, so.
I apologize if if I may to the chair, I do see another commenter who's raised their hand.
Okay.
Um, this person uh is named Mara. They take money, take monies. I'm sorry. Um, you uh are the next public commenter. If you could please state your name and your address and or political jurisdiction. You may uh be allowed to speak at this time and unmute yourself as well. Thank you.
Yes, this is actually Pam Stadnik. I'm on the west side of the property. I feel I am probably the most affected by this build. Um, it is all across the fence line at about eleven feet high. It goes up to, I'm not sure if it's nineteen or twenty one, twenty two feet at this point on the second story. Um, I was led to believe that the upper story would start behind my patio for further towards the back of your property. Um, and then I am being told that is not so. Um, you had specifically written that the second story was going to be moved back even further. And um it would be moved away from the patio. It would not be visible. So I would really like clarification on that. So far, all the plans I have seen do not indicate that it has been moved back. Um, I would also like to inquire as to whether there cannot be trees tall enough that it would break up that second story. Um, there is a window that you have put in there that is in the center of the patio. Um, if I am standing in my kitchen, I feel I can look in that window and vice versa. Um, that was not included in the original plans also. Um, also regarding the trees, the um redwood tree is actually has been looked after by the property at one four nine, which also owned one five three and one four seven at one time, and even further land. Um, it was always maintained and paid for by us. And so anything that is going to be done to that tree in order to get the boom truck in, I would be interested in knowing. Um, and I think at this time that kind of covers it. Also, the roof garden. I'm not sure exactly what is going to grow there and how it's going to be maintained. But one does not want to look at dead plants, so hopefully there is a way that that something will keep these alive. And I think those are my questions right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Pruder, do we have any other hands raised this time?
This time I see no other hands raised or phones seeking to speak, so I believe you're referring to you may close the public comment period.
Okay, you know, closed public comment, bringing it back to the commission for their questions and comments. Do we have someone who'd like to speak at this time? Commissioner Harris.
Yeah, um, I uh, I'd like to thank the presenters. Um, I think it's a beautiful house. I went to the plant prefab website website and found many of the examples to be very beautiful, and I'm really excited um for this project. And thank you for that presentation. Um, there were a number of neighbors who were concerned about the roadway because especially because they maintain it and pay for it themselves and have just redone it. Um, and I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to um to that point. Um, and also if there is a way that we can assure the neighbors that that this roadway will be kept whole um throughout the project. Um, I think that would be also good for future projects that you may have to um lessen the worry of of others. So um, if you could, if I could ask through the chair of Ms. McLaughlin to talk a little bit about um how how that's going to work.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, that's a good question. It's come up a bunch. Um, and we did some research and and reached out to the city about it as well. And uh Oak Court is designed, has been uh improved, I guess, in recent years. And the road is built to the specifications of the city. So all new roads in Menlo Park are built to this specification. And it should hold up fine uh for that reason, because it's a new road built to city specs. Um, that being said, if anything does happen, the crane companies, the truck companies, contractors, they all have, you know, insurance and would be held liable for it. And I believe the city is putting it as a condition of approval. Um, if Ori wants to speak to that.
Mr. Paz, uh, do you want to speak to the question?
Certainly. Thank you, Chair. Um, there is a recommended condition of approval. Uh, you can see in attachment A of the staff report. Uh, I believe it is, sorry, give me just one second to confirm. Uh, but it is a project specific condition of approval that any damage to the roadway uh be repaired. Um, and then in conversation with our public works department uh as part of the implementation of that condition of approval, if the project is approved, that there would likely be an engineering uh division staff member to document the the um condition of the roadway prior to and following, you know, the completion of the construction. Uh, but of course, before um finally inspection sign off by the building division.
Thank you.
We have other commissioners that would like to speak. Mr. Riggs.
Sorry, I had buried my uh zoom buttons and was looking for alternatives. I'd like to ask for clarification about uh the second floor area known as the garden windowsill. It appears to me that that is a deck that is primarily intended to have potted plants on it. Is that in layman's terms, what is is going on? And through the chair, if I could ask that of the applicant.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Riggs, that is correct.
Right, so it is, it it is an accessible deck.
Um, it is, well, it's like window sill height and in old fashioned, in old fashioned like way, I'll put a whole bunch of sensitive areas on there like my grandmother used to. It's another Dutch custom where like you put like, you know, a ton of like indoor plants behind your, behind your windows.
It's, it's not exposed to the elements, if that's the question. It's it's interior. It's interior. It's.
Yeah, they are interior. Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
And if, and if a future owner doesn't want to put plants there, they don't have to. They could put like, I don't know, pictures.
Whatever, you know, lift curtains, whatever they.
Yes, I built, I built a plant window uh many years ago in San Francisco and the subsequent owner put um textured plastic in it in order to create.
Not really an improvement, but.
No, not really, but you cannot uh, can't control that.
Yeah, I was amazed that like in in it's very uncommon here for people to have indoor plants, but like pretty much every house in the Netherlands is packed with them. So that's why I gave him a special place.
Understood. All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments from the commission? I'm not seeing any hands. Commissioner Harris.
Okay, I'm sorry to bring this up, but um in the short time that I've been on the planning commission, there have been a number of applicant issues with minimum parking requirements have surfaced. And in this one, um, one of the uh neighbors wrote in that it was possible that Mr. Young might have considered just having a one story house. However, she had no choice but to build a two story house because of the two car requirement. And then last week, when we discussed CS Bio, the minimum requirement for parking was more um than he calculated was necessary for the building. Um, and in fact, when he first presented it, he was thinking that he would just lease the extra parking to some of the other uh folks in the area. Um, the other companies who would like to have extra parking above what they were allowed. So I just wanted to mention and put on record that I've brought this up with at least one city council member who's interested in looking into this issue and would love to have a commission such as the planning commission rather than the city council take this up. And I sent a message to Kyle, who is currently out of town about how we might accomplish this. I bring it up only um tangentially with this uh project, um given that it has come up. So I just wanted to make mention of that and um I I will have to uh continue when I can get back to Kyle.
Thank you. Um, actually, this is something that I've been concerned with. I think we have routinely approved larger projects with less parking than is actually required under the ordinance. Um, and I think there's a lot of sentiment that the ordinances need to be updated, which I would really like to see happen. I I I would like the rules to be clear. And if uh, you know, if there's a consensus for less parking, I think people should know what the rules are when when they write an application and uh certainly on the commercial side and the larger project side, I don't feel like that's the case now. Uh, but on residential, we have been more consistent, it seems, in applying the parking requirements. Um, Commissioner Riggs, you have your hand raised again?
Well, it just occurred to me that you might um want a motion at this point lacking in uh other input.
Yes, I was just about to to see if anyone wanted to make a motion when Commissioner Harris raised your hand. Would anyone like to make a motion? Would you like to make a motion?
Well, I seem to have raised my hand, so I guess I'll do that. Um, and um uh, so just observing that while it is a modern architecture and some uh comments have made about, been made about the compatibility with the neighborhood. Um, neighborhoods such as Felton Gables that feel they want a continuity of architecture have stepped forward and discussed it. Um, and not necessarily move forward with the idea of uh specifying styles for the neighborhood and this, this neighborhood does not have that. So we're in no position to um talk about uh different styles in one place, just to note that. Um, and as for uh the full height windows um that uh overlook the stairway atrium or face the stairway atrium, um, they are a bold statement. The one on the front is well set back, so I think the front elevation makes it look more prominent uh and even unwieldy than um actual view from the street uh could possibly be. And um finally, I'd just like to note that there seems to be a great deal of sensitivity that ultimately went into this project and um rather extensive discussions with neighbors. And I think that's what uh this commission, certainly speaking for myself, that's what we hope for when anything moves forward and that's in any way challenging. So um I'd like to make the motion to uh approve the request for the use permit per the staff report.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
I think Commissioner Kennedy was the first with the hand raised. Uh, so we have a motion, a second to approve uh as written, as applied. I'll take a roll call. Uh, Commissioner DeCarty.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mr. Tate.
Yes.
Although in favor as well, motion passes six zero with Mr. Barnes absent.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Um. Thank you very much.
So next on the agenda, we have two items associated with the single staff report. One is uh an EIR scoping session, which is a public hearing. And then we move into a study session on the same uh on the same project. So um I will introduce the first part of the project, the EIR scoping session. Uh, and then I think we will move to a single presentation from uh the applicant for both. It's been our practice before. So um we have an environmental impact report, the IR scoping session from the Sabrata organization for one nineteen, one twenty seven Independence Drive, twelve oh five Chrysler Drive, and one thirty Constitution Drive. Request for you, an environmental review for use permit, architectural control, vesting tentative map, low market rate housing agreement. low market rate housing agreement, and heritage tree removal permits for proposed multifamily residential development in the RMUV residential mixed use bonus zoning district. The proposed project would consist of a major subdivision for construction of 116 for sale townhomes and 316 unit rental apartment building for a total of 432 dwelling units. The townhomes are proposed to be three stories tall with garage parking, and the apartment building is proposed to be five stories tall with two levels below and at grade podium parking. The project site currently consists of five existing office and industrial buildings totaling 103,900 square feet that would be demolished. The proposed buildings would contain approximately 476,961,000, sorry, 961 square feet of gross floor area of residential of residential uses with a floor area ratio of 134%. Proposed project would utilize bonus level gross floor area, GFA, density and height in exchange for community amenities. The proposed project would include a below market rate housing agreement that requires a minimum of 15% or 66 units be affordable and will be required to comply with the city's BMR program. The proposed project includes lot line adjustments and removal of 28 heritage trees. The proposal also includes a use permit request for the storage and use of hazardous materials, diesel fuel, for an emergency backup generator to be incorporated into the proposed project. Notice of Preparation, NLP, for the proposed project was released on Friday, September 10th, 2021. The NLP provides a description of the proposed project, the location of the proposed project, and its probable environmental effects. The EIR will address potential physical environmental effects of the proposed project as outlined in the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. An initial study was not completed as it is anticipated that this will be a full EIR and no topic areas will be scoped out with the exception of agricultural and forestry resources, mineral resources, and wildfire that are topic areas that are not anticipated to require further analysis. The city is requesting comments on the scope and content that this EIR proposed location does not contain a toxic site pursuant to section 6596.2 of the government code. Comments on the scope and context of the focus EIR are due by 5:00 PM Monday, October 11th, 2021. I believe we have a staff report from Mr. Bagat. Is he here with us tonight? Oh, Ms. Bagat, I'm sorry. Did you have anything to add to the staff report?
Sure. Good evening. I have a brief presentation. I'm just waiting for one to bring it up so I can share it with the commission. If you can just give me a moment while I control the slides. Here we go. Good evening, Chair, members of the commission and members of the public. As Chair Dorn mentioned, the project review this evening is the review of scope of works to be included in the environmental impact report and the study session for the redevelopment of five parcels with 316 unit apartment building and 116 for sale townhomes. The project site is 8.15 acres and is located in the Bayfront area north of Highway 101 and east of Marsh Road. This project site sits east of the recently approved Menlo Portal project. As previously mentioned, the purpose of this meeting is not to take an action but to review the notice of preparation prepared by staff and provide comments that will inform the preparation of the environmental impact report for this project. This project was previously reviewed by October by the planning commission on January 25th, but at that time, this project was a mixed use project and had an office element to it. The applicant has since then revised the project to make it 100% residential and therefore staff has issued a revised NLP. As mentioned, the notice, the NLP public comment period ends October 11th at 5:00 PM. Staff would also like to do a study session to review the various design components and other components of the of the project. Details of that will be discussed when the study session component of the project is comes out. Um, for this meeting, since we have two elements, staff has prepared a recommended format. Our staff recommends that we do the public hearing for the EIR scoping session first. Follow my following my presentation, staff would recommend that you invite the applicant to make a presentation and and give an overview of the project. Following which the EIR consultant, which in this case is DUDAC, would come and give you the overview of the sequel process, where we are in the process, and what is the future timeline for this project. Following which, we recommend that you open up and solicit public comments on the EIR scoping session and then conclude the meeting with questions and commissioner comments. For the study session, staff would like to make a brief introduction and we request that you open up the comments, the floor for public comments on the design of the project and then add conclude the meeting with providing your own comments. This concludes my brief introduction and I'm of course available to answer any questions that you might have while we go through the project. And with this, I would turn the meeting over to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have clarifying questions for Ms. Bagat now? Before we go to the applicant's presentation. Okay, I'm not seeing any. So if the applicant would like to make their presentation now, ready?
Yes, that'd be great. Give us one second to load it up.
Okay.
Henry, are you gonna show your screen?
Sorry, I didn't think we I was sharing my screen. I thought I was controlling a screen. I could share mine if that's accepted.
Is that okay? Chair Dorn?
Yes, whoever you'd like.
Thank you. Sorry. Sorry for the delay. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Chair Dorn, Vice Chair DeCarty, Commissioners, Staff, and Menlo Park residents. Thank you for giving us the opportunity this evening to represent 123 Independence. I am Peter Tai from the Sobrato Organization, and I'm joined tonight by Chek Tang from SCOT Square and Nick Samuelson from the Gazarta Partnership. For those of you who are unfamiliar with Sobrato, we are a local family owned organization that have been part of the Bay Area since the 1950s. The organization consists of three divisions, Sobrato Capital, Sobrato Philanthropies, and Sobrato Real Estate. The ethos of the organization is making the Bay Area a place of opportunity for all, and this is shown through its philanthropic ventures as well as its approach towards real estate. Back in January 25th, at the planning commission meeting, we highlighted our commitment to community outreach as long term holders of real estate is important for Sobrato to understand the community we develop in. Since the January 25th meeting, Sobrato has continued its outreach to a diverse group of Menlo Park and Bell Haven stakeholders to solicit feedback on the project. The resounding feedback we received from those in the community as well as this planning commission was the need for more housing and in particular, more ownership units. Sobrato took that comment to heart and directed the team to remove the office building and add more for sale housing. The result is an all residential 432 unit project with a public gap with public gathering spaces, walkable green connections, and Paseos, and a genuine neighborhood feel. To orient you, Lot A at the top of the page is a 316 unit apartment complex. Moving counterclockwise, Lot B is 26 townhome units. Lot C is 18 townhome units and Lot D is 72 townhome units. The apartments are a mix of studios ones and twos, while the townhomes are two to four bedrooms. As currently conceived, all the affordable townhomes are located in Lot C. Sobrato plans either develop the affordable townhomes through Sobrato Philanthropy or partner with a nonprofit for sale housing developer such as Habitat for Humanity to deliver those housing units. By concentrating the affordable units together on one parcel, that component of the project can utilize additional funding sources with the goal of achieving deeper levels of affordability. You will also notice that Lot C is prominently placed along Independence Drive and has great frontage along the central open space of the project. I will now be turning the presentation over to Chek Tang, who will guide you through a quick fly through of the project. Chek?
Thank you, Peter. I would attempt to do a very quick tour of the project. Let's start. Starting from Independence Drive on the south side of the project, taking a stroll or bike through the sale going north, going through essentially the townhome district adjacent to the park and running on Independence going arriving at the middle park, community park, continue on Paseo, which becomes a linkage to existing projects as well as future projects. The presence of the apartment building on constitutions, much more commercial and kind of larger scale, coming through Central Park, which is kind of the outdoor living room for the entire district is organized to also tie into a green belt that's threats to the various neighborhood of the townhome communities, creating a pedestrian friendly experience. And we also heard from the previous planning commission study session that we want to keep create a much more interesting in residential scale development on townhome side and in complements to the apartments. Our intent during the design intent is to really meet the and to be compliant with the metal connect metal and RMU zoning district design guidelines. With that, I'll go back to PowerPoint. As Peter had mentioned, that this is our previous plan with the office building. And now that we're going to all residential component, it really kind of creates some opportunity for us to improve plans even more. Previously, the the office building kind of cut off the the residential circulation, pedestrian circulation within the site over to Chrysler. And also the Paseo, the way it was designed, it is a straight kind of shot through from Independence to Constitution. But nevertheless, the community space becomes a transitory space. And then also, again, as mentioned, we also improved on the residential character of the townhomes by creating varying districts in this new plan, which we'll see next. So with this new plan, one of the things that's really, you know, great addition also is the circulation. We've actually allowed the access point now on Chrysler to be now aligned with Jeff. I think it's Jeffrey Drive, that has now allowing us vehicular full turning radius on all directions in another project. In addition to that, as you can see, the the alignment of the Paseo is still visually all the way through from Independence to Constitution. However, the community part is now much more defined as part of the public open space and not necessarily part of the path. It's a more defined community part. And then also, as a result of limiting the office, we were able to create much better and green belt connection throughout the townhome portion of the project, which creates a lot better connections besides the street frontage on all sides. And then not not the least of it is also the idea of having creating a little bit of a crack in the apartment buildings that allows for the amenity areas up in the podium level now to connect to the parks. So in a sense, your apartments also have the front door in the park sharing it with the rest of the district. And then in terms of the affordable housing, one of the things that we really want to do is integrate affordable housing, the townhome Lot C area really is almost the the feature of the district in a in a way that it addresses the street the same way as any market rate units. It addresses the park and the presence on the park equally well with with the rest of the project. In addition, all of all the affordable rental units in Lot A as well. With that, we also had taken a shot at the elevations. We really appreciate. Oh, I'm sorry. This is basically a zoning diagram, so that next please. So this is only diagram that talks about massing and bulk still from really has not changed since the last time we we spoke on the project. And as you can see, we have a mix of housing types, townhomes as well as apartments. You can see later that we have actually varied the architectural expression on the townhomes and made improvement to the apartments as well. In terms of variation of heights, we are two and three stories, kind of articulations of the townhomes of the 36 foot height. The apartments actually five story in this case, actually because the theme and future proving of FEMA. The garage is actually one level subterranean with a transition from street up to the the actual finished grade. And we're doing some creative things to make those not feel like a great separation, but really a pedestrian friendly experience. Open space amenities, as mentioned, the heart of the the community is a community neighborhood park and also the through Paseo from Independence to Constitution along with a series of open spaces within the townhome project and obviously the gardens, podium gardens on top of the apartments. Next. In terms of architecture, we also received some really constructive critique from staff. Is our intent to be compliant with connect menlo or RFU district design guideline. This is our previous middle where the critique was that the larger frames did not meet some of the minor articulation of the building. In addition to some of these very consistent roofline that was mentioned, and then maybe some of the contrast in the area that recesses. In addition to some comments about material. So in a new design that we have worked with, the recommendation from staff and looking intently at the compliance to the RFU zone by creating much more clear articulation, vertical articulations as prescribed in zoning to create these major and minor articulations in the building. In addition to that, the other thing that we've done is creating a much clearer base middle and top is called also call for with the upper story recess is called for in the zoning ordinance. Another thing that we're also refining is our material palette, given that we know that there is requirement for lower use of plaster. We actually minimizing the exterior plaster, which are all smooth travel plaster on some of the darker elements of product or the upper floor element and some of the frame elements actually rain screen kind of material which enhances it more commercially. Next please. And on the townhomes, which we received probably the most commentary is that we were trying to make it tie into the apartments is our previous design. And the commentary was to make this more residential kind of feel and and kind of the massing. And so in our new project design that we're proposing essentially a kind of a kind of composition of three different architectural style, because now that we have also a much larger a townhome project, that one of which is kind of a brick, kind of a contemporary brick building that has a more contemporary roofline, but it's nevertheless a very playful roofline. Another one that has a look harkens to back to the the character of the apartment project. Another one that has a look harkens to back to the the character of the apartment project, but a little bit more contemporary and also a very interesting roofline as well. And then the the lower left one is actually the architecture for the affordable housing, which we want to keep it simple and clean, but also becomes a really good counterpoint to the market rate housing. The notion of all these projects is the architecture really does not vary regardless of the uses of the type. So you can see we have a combination of brick veneer. There are some rain screen material, hardy siding material as well as plaster material. A combination of those working concert with each other throughout the site. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Nick Samus and landscape architect.
Hi, Nick Samuelson with the Gisardo Partnership. Nice to be here to talk to you about this today. When we're looking at the landscape design, important element for us was connecting all these open space and amenities throughout the site with the different Paseos and walkways and the vehicular circulation that we had to have through here. So running north to south, you have the connect memo park trail. They'll be going through the site and looking at how we're going to integrate that in there. And then going east west, we have an additional Paseo that cuts through the townhomes and wrapping around the west side and the south side of the apartments is a fire access lane. Twenty-six feet wide, that's up from the apartment buildings. We're talking about right there. That's part of it. It's a vehicular area for fire trucks, but it's pedestrian zone mainly in our minds. So we're looking at that and you know, other important functions we have on the site, including stormwater treatment, our integration with the surrounding community with the stoops that we'll be doing around the all the streets, all the all of the units have a direct access out onto the front onto their and a part of what's happening on the site, we're required to raise the site five feet to meet the FEMA flood requirements. And that provides, you know, some challenges and also some opportunities. I would say it's an opportunity with these stoops. They have to be have a nice terrace down and good view and get some eyes out on the street there. And it provides a nice entry into the Paseo. It does present the problem where all of the trees on the site have to be removed just because the way the topography is going to work on the site now. So we are looking at replacing the trees. We have twenty-eight heritage trees. And then we also have, I think it's fifty-seven non-heritage trees that will be removing as a part of that, but we are putting them three hundred and fifty-one new trees. A lot of them are larger canopy trees and native oaks that we are part of it and various sizes from twenty-four inch box to forty-eight to sixty inch box trees that we're integrating into the design. And go to the next slide. So as Chuck said, you know, the heart of the site really is this central open space. And when we're looking at that to story into through it, north, south, we have the connect memo park trail. That's the ten foot wide pathway that goes through there. Trying to keep that pretty open through there and having that meandering through so it has some interest to it. So if you're starting down on independence, it's picking up the five foot grade change there through a series of terrace spaces that we'd have. So these kind of terrorist rooms there with the different materials decks and lawn areas that go through there. And another path that kind of zigzags through it. And as you level out at the top, there's the large plaza space right there. It's actually also a fire access lane that's required to get through the site right there. And as you step past that, you enter into a rain garden, which is doing a lot of the treatment for the areas around the townhomes. And we took that area as an opportunity to make some nice garden spaces where we have a deck spaces that meander through it and some stepstones that allow you to get fully immersed into that garden area. And after that, the site kind of fans out into the larger open space. And when you're in there, there's a playground space, you have a flexible turf area. And as the backdrop to that on the east is an oak woodland garden that we're looking at doing right over there. So you know, trees providing canopy, of course, the on the west side is the connect memo park trail. As you go further up, there's the plaza space there that's we can switch to the next slide, which we show a little bit more of it's on this fire lane and Paseo diagram here. So still a part of the open space here, but it is the fire lane. So we took that as opportunity to make a nice kind of plaza space that fronts is kind of a this the kind of the porch or front door to the apartment building part there. And it gives us kind of a seamless connection to some of the uses that we have in apartments. There's the lobby area over to the far right. And there's a stairway that leads up to the podium. And then there's some flex uses and various other air doors that kind of front out on to the open space there. Also providing a lot of bike parking areas over there near the lobby and those flexious areas and down in the park where we're also looking at putting in like a bike service area will be a part of that. The Paseo down on the bottom, that's the one that's cutting through the townhomes. We wanted to kind of meander that through there to make that a nice leisurely walk kind of experiences you go through there. The meandering also allows us to have little nooks along the way that can be a little seating areas. You kind of bump into some rain gardens and just where intersections happen in the path. And go to next slide. This is the Paseo that goes along the apartment. So it's kind of the west side of the apartments. And so also a fire lane as well. So it's got to be twenty-six feet wide of a weatherproof surface. So we had to look at paving opportunities that we could do in this area. So we kept the ten foot wide trail going through there. And then we're looking at breaking up the rest of the paving with a variety of different materials. Kind of like what we're showing in some of these inner inspiration pictures, kind of using that to like fold different materials over each other to give a lot of variety and richness to the spaces that we're making. And using some of that meandering pathway ideas that we're using to create little nooks where you can have seating opportunities along there as well. And then if you go to the next slide, this is just kind of showing a nice overview, I think, of how the open space connects through there. So you have down on independence from the bottom in the walkway, kind of terracing up, leading into the rain gardens. Then to the lawn, which is functions, I was like the front yard to the apartment buildings and connects it all together right there. And with that, thank you for your time and you have been answering any questions we can.
Okay, if we have any clarifying questions from the commission, I think we can ask them now. Otherwise, we should go on to the EIR report, consultant's report and the public comments. I can't see all of the commission. So someone, any commissioners have like speak, please speak up because they don't have all of your pictures on my screen right now. Okay. So I think we have the EIR consultant's report next.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Caitlin Roberts. And I am a planner with the environmental consulting firm DUDAC. We will be preparing the environmental impact report or EIR for this project in compliance with the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA. Can you get back? Can you all see my screen? Okay.
Yes.
Sure. Okay. Okay, so this slide just provides an overview of the slides in this presentation. I do have a slide for each of these bullet points, so I'll just go ahead and jump right in. First up, the purpose of the scoping session is to help inform our work as we prepare the EIR for the project. The scoping session provides an opportunity early in the environmental review process for commissioners, public agencies and community members to comment on specific topics that they believe should be addressed or included in the environmental analysis. The scoping session is also an opportunity for us to receive comments related to possible mitigation measures or strategies that may be used to reduce potential environmental impacts associated with the development of the project site. And it's also an opportunity to provide input on potential alternatives for consideration in the draft EIR. So as the applicant has already touched on the project revisions that have come about since the submission of the original application. Those include the replacement of the office use with forty-nine townhomes. And as the applicant showed, those townhomes would be distributed across the southern portion of the site. There was a previous scoping session held on January twenty-fifth of this year to solicit comments on that original application. I'll discuss some of the feedback that was received during that presentation. So just as I, as I mentioned before, the revisions included the replacement of office uses with residential. And then other changes as the applicant discussed, included the conversion of the emergency only access from Chrysler Drive to full access. And then the modification of the Paseo park and open space elements of the project. And this slide lists the topics that we are anticipating will be addressed in the EIR. As we discussed back in January, the project is not expected to result in significant effects to agriculture or forestry resources, mineral resources or wildfire. So a detailed analysis of those topics will not be included in the IR. The rest of these, the topics listed on this slide will be covered in the document. For several of these topics, we will be preparing some of the typical technical reports. And we'll use those to complete the impact analysis in each of the associated sections of the AR. For example, our team is preparing standalone reports for biological and cultural resources, noise, air quality and greenhouse gas, and then also transportation and traffic. So for traffic, our transportation team is going to be preparing a transportation impact analysis in accordance with the city's guidelines. The city's traffic analysis guidelines have recently been updated to require that transportation impacts in CEQA be determined based on vehicle miles traveled or VMT instead of level of service LOS. However, the city's guidelines still do require traffic reports include that LOS analysis for planning purposes. So the report that our DUDAC team prepares will include the VMT analysis as well as LOS analysis. And the graphic on this slide just shows the study intersections that our team will be looking at in their traffic study. So on this slide, we have an overview of the environmental review process and along with milestones and then the estimated dates for completion of those milestones. As was mentioned before, the NOP was released on September tenth. And then the comment period for the NOP will end on October eleventh. Following the close of the comment period, we will be working on preparing the draft EIR. And the draft EIR is expected to be published in midwinter of twenty twenty-two. And then at that time, there will be another public hearing on the draft EIR, and that will be an opportunity for the public and agencies to comment on the draft EIR document. And then the final EIR will be prepared and that will address all of the comments received during the draft EIR comment review period. And the the final EIR will include any required changes that are necessary to the draft EIR. And then that the date for that is expected to occur in mid-spring of twenty twenty-two. And then following the hearing for the final, and then then there'll be the hearing for the final EIR, which will be held before the planning commission and city council. And that's expected in late spring of twenty twenty-two. And after the EIR is certified, the project can then be approved. And so as I mentioned, there was a previous scoping session held to look at the original project application. And that that was in December of twenty twenty into January of this year. The scoping session was held on January twenty-fifth of this year. And verbal comments were received during that section. And then following the session, there were four agency comment letters that were received. So for the agency comments that were received, they came from the State Department of Fish and Wildlife, Caltrans, Native American Heritage Commission, and then the Sequoia Union High School District. And then for the the verbal comments received, I'm not going to go through all of them, but they did include comments about the relationship of the project to the connect menlo plan and the EIR for the plan. And then there were concerns related to adequacy of open space and recreation demands. Concerns related to traffic impacts, land use compatibility, impacts to schools, loss of trees, and so on. So as I said before, comments received regarding the scope and content of information to be considered in the EIR from both the January twenty-fifth session and the verbal comments received tonight, and then any other written comments received prior and of the current comment period that ends on October eleventh. Those will all be considered in the draft EIR. So this slide just provides information for submitting written comments on the draft EIR. Those have to be submitted by October eleventh before five PM to the city. Contact information is provided on this slide. And that I guess that includes my presentation and I am available to answer any questions and look forward to receiving your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. So if we have any clarifying questions for Ms. Roberts now is an appropriate time. If not, I'm going to move to public comment on the EIR scoping session. And then after that, we'll have a chance for comments from the commission. Do we have any clarifying questions at this time? Okay. I'm not seeing any Mr. Pruder. Can we see if we have any hands raised for public comment?
Thank you, Chair Doran. At this time, as a reminder to members of the public, if you'd like to speak on the EIR scoping session item for this project, you may do so by raising your hand with the hand icon and icon on your screen, or if you are calling by phone, pressing star nine. At this moment, I do not see any hands or phones that seek to provide public comments. But if you'd like, we can wait a moment and confirm that as well.
Yeah, let's let's give people a minute to raise their hands. So still no hands raised?
That is correct, Chair Doran. No hands raised and no phones indicating the hand as well.
Okay, I'm going to close public comments on the EIR scoping session. We will have another opportunity for comments on the project when we do the study session next. So I'd like to bring it back to our virtual dais and see what comments and questions we have for the questions we have from the commission. Don't be shy. Mr. DeCarter?
This is a pattern that I'm very happy to break to my fellow commissioners. I am glad not to go first. But I'm also happy going first.
Someone's got to do it.
Ms. Roberts, thanks for your presentation. Really appreciate it and the work that you're doing here. I have a couple of questions. The first is around how you all do your analysis around transportation and vehicle miles traveled relative to different scenarios for relative to different scenarios for parking embedded in a project. So do you look at only the proposed parking? Or what are the dependent or independent variables that you would look at in order to analyze what the impacts are on vehicle miles traveled?
Um, I'm not really prepared to answer that question. I would have to pull in, you know, our specialists. You know, that they, they will be preparing the study. We have a whole transportation team. And I'm not sure what the, how they would assess that for this project.
I think Ms. Begat want to say something? Is that what you came on screen?
Yeah, I was just hoping to kind of give you an overview of generally how it's done. For projects such as these, you would take a look at what the applicant is proposing in terms of parking. There is also, as you know, requirements in our zoning code to reduce the vehicle miles traveled through TDM programs. And we would look at the TDM programs and their effectiveness vis a vis reducing the VMT. But you know, after that, if there should there be any impacts identified, then we would kind of go in and see how we can mitigate those impacts. And by chair, I know we've had this conversation around reduction of VMT as its connection to parking and alternatives for the project at various other meetings. And I think that component of the environmental document would really depend on the type of impact that we find. But as Ms. Roberts indicated, we have not done that analysis in this stage for this project. This is really informing the scope of the environmental document. So when we prepare the transportation analysis, we would look at all those various aspects. And hopefully that kind of little bit answers your question.
Yeah, it does. I appreciate that. And I've been on the record before, Ms. Roberts, you may not as much. So first on the TDM, the TDM that's always put in place is essentially voluntary TDM. It's conceptual. It doesn't really help in this mix. And it all is based, and then the analysis that you end up doing through your firm, you know, is going to have a whole set of assumptions. But I've said this, and so I'll just be clear, I'm not going to certify an EIR as adequate if it does not have an alternative project that has a major, major reduction in parking and shows what the costs and benefits are to community of that major reduction in parking. I've given comments on EIRs. I can't imagine how many times now. And the outcome of the EIRs is that they are not helpful documents for our community and members of our community to understand something that comes up again and again, especially in this neighborhood, which is the impact of traffic and increase of traffic and the frustrations that that caused for people. And that has a significant environmental component. And we always look at this from the lens of what is code and what is proposed for parking. And we never get to see it from the lens of what would it look like if there was half of the parking proposed? Or if there was seventy-five percent reduction in parking? And what the environmental impacts would be for that, the opportunity for the community to consider those. So that's my one and major frustration with our EIR process. That's my input. But ultimately, if we end up with alternatives, which are essentially no project, max project or this project, and we don't address the parking as a fourth alternative in some significantly reduced way, then I am not going to certify it as adequate. I, of course, am only one commissioner, so I can get voted down, but you at least know where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have others like to speak now? Ms. Ricks?
Yeah, thank you. Well, this won't surprise the other commission members that I will echo Mr. DeCarty in my request that we see an alternative in the EIR that specifically results in significant traffic reduction. And I will simply echo what Mr. DeCarty has suggested. I think that that's a fine approach to specifically look at parking. Because that can be part of the definition of a project alternative. This may not be a requirement of CEQA. But I think there is interest here on this commission representing the city of Menlo Park and to the degree that we may that we have such an alternative. And if it's presented as an additional alternative outside the requirements of CEQA, as long as it appears in the EIR, it will respond to the concerns that you've heard in the last five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. We have other commissioners like to speak. Okay. We, appears we don't. I want to ask Ms. Begat if she feels that she's got enough input for the scoping session.
Thank you, Chair. We still have time till October eleventh to get input. So if any of the commissioners have another thought on what should be studied as part of this environmental impact work, we will certainly consider those comments. And quite oftentimes, we get comment letters after the public hearing, identifying issues that they would like to see studied in the document. So for this evening, if we have no other speakers, then we can certainly move on to the study session component.
Okay.
Project. With your permission.
Certainly. Well, I don't see other commissioners raising their hands, so I'm going to close the public hearing portion and move on to our study session. So I think we had, you know, combined presentation from the applicants. We don't have further presentations. Correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Chair, if you don't mind, I have just one slide presentation covering the topics for discussion for the study session that I would like to go over really quickly. And then we can thank you. Thank you. So for the study session component, there, you know, the site plan has changed from when the commission previously started this project. So staff would like that the planning commission provide feedback on the revised project design, that is, they have seen colors and materials, how the open space has been visualized as part of this project. The applicant is still working on the community amenities proposal for this project. So any feedback the commission would have on that component, this is bonus level development. So community amenities will be part of the proposal that comes forward to the commission for final approval. So any comments you might have on that aspect of the project would be greatly appreciated. And finally, we would like the commission to provide comments on the BMR housing proposal. There are a mix of housing units that the applicant is proposing, but for the for sale product, the townhome product, the applicant is proposing a clustered design style rather than scattering the inclusionary housing units across the site, which we typically see. They are proposing that so that they have, as they mentioned, some financing benefits of doing that. But we would really like the commission to provide comments on the BMR mix, of course, but then the fact that the for sale housing would be clustered on one parcel. And if you have any thoughts on that, that would be greatly appreciated. And this concludes my presentation and we can move on to public comments. I turn the meeting over to Chair Doran. Thank you.
Thank you. So we can have clarifying questions for Ms. Begat now. But then we, I want to open it up for public comments before the commission provides its comments. So we have any clarifying questions? Okay. If we have members of the public that would like to comment, we have an opportunity to do that now. You can comment on the project itself, the architecture, really anything, anything other than the EIR scoping session. Mr. Pruder, do we have hands raised at this time?
Thank you, Chair Doran. We do have one hand raised at this time with your permission. I could allow them to speak and provide public comment.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Doran. We have a person with the name Pam Jones. She would like to comment, so I'm going to allow you to talk at this time. And if you could please provide your name and your jurisdiction and or address as you begin your comment. You are now able to unmute yourself at this time. Thank you.
Good evening. Pamela Jones, thirteen seventy-one Hollyburn, near, very near Hamilton, to give you a perspective. I'm going to talk a little bit about the public comment that I made, that I sent in, which was actually a part, I want as a part of the EIR. But I think it's appropriate for me to make sure that you all have, have read that because I talk about housing and, and the BMR units. And as I've said in the past, they should be substantially increased. And in addition to that, we need to make sure that the residents here in Bellhaven and other parts of the city that are losing their homes should have first rights for these places. So thank you very much and thank you for the work that you do.
I had my, I had my microphone on mute there. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Do we have further public comments? Any other hands raised, Mr. Pruder?
At this time, I don't see any other requests to comment from any phone numbers or members of the public on Zoom. But I'm welcoming, waiting for a moment perhaps just to confirm that.
Yeah, let's give people a minute to raise their hands. Do we have any hands raised?
I can confirm we do not have any hands raised for phones or other members of the public. So if you'd like, you can close the public comment for this portion of the meeting.
Yes, I'm going to close public comment, bringing it back to the commission. I think I'm going to uncharacteristically lead off and give Commissioner DeCarty a break. I actually would like to ask the applicants about the BMR units. I think it's great that we have BMR units for purchase here. We don't have a lot of those. But I want to understand the financing considerations and clustering them together. I think I've, I've heard the general considerations before, but I would like to hear a little bit more about the specifics. So what kind of financing is available and why they need to be clustered together to secure that financing?
So I'll take that. This is Peter from Sabrato. So the way that for sale units work, you know, whether it's a market rate developer, those units are clustered together and financed and sold, you know, as individual units. If you were to finance a one hundred percent affordable, you can go after public funds such as state, county, or city funds and even federal funds. And that helps you achieve deeper levels of affordability with those funds. And you're not able to achieve that if it's a mix or in what's some people call door by door projects. And so that's why people such as like a Habitat for Humanity are able to go after those types of affordable projects. That makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. So I'm just going to try to hit the bull points that I got asked for. I think the site planning and the use of the land is very appropriate for the site. I'm happy actually to see the revisions to the application, even though it creates a little more workforce. And to see that the, the office space eliminated in favor of more housing. We've got a lot of office space. We're getting more all the time. We don't have enough housing and we're not getting more enough fast enough. So I'm very much in favor of that substitution. Architecturally, I, I do not have objections. I'm sure some of my fellow commissioners will have more granular detail on the architecture, but I think overall it's pleasing. It's appropriate for the context. It's appropriate to the neighborhood. And I think some thought's gone into it. So I don't have problems with the architecture. I think the community amenity is kind of up in the air. I personally probably will wait to see what's proposed before commenting on that. On the BMR units, I do think in general it's better to distribute them throughout a project. But I understand the considerations of the finance and I think that keeping the cost of those units as low as possible is an understandable and desirable objective and it's something that I'm in favor of. And I think that given the positioning, the BMR units in the middle of the development, I don't feel like they're being, you know, relegated to an inferior place or anything. So I'm in favor of allowing the developer to achieve the lowest cost financing and hopefully the lowest sale price for these units. So I I'm in support of the application, you know, as it's currently outlined. And with that, I will look for comments from my fellow commissioners. I think, I think Commissioner Harris won the race there.
Oh dear. I don't want to win the race versus Commissioner Ricks. Okay, so overall, I think the architecture and the massing of the project, they're attractive. I like the open space. Uh-oh, wait. Can you still hear me? I lost one of my, I lost one of my ears, but I guess the other one's still working. Okay, good. Thank you. I like the trail through the site, how it connects with the apartment building, the oak tree forest area and the meandering Paseo through the townhomes. I'm super excited to see the townhomes included in the BMR and also that they are two and four bedrooms that families will have an opportunity to live there and begin to generate wealth, which is not very easy to do. And we haven't made it easy in the past. So I appreciate the changes that you made to make the townhomes look more like a residential community. As far as the community amenities go, you know, we're in the middle of relooking at the community amenity list in, in the city. And I recognize this is not helpful to developers because we don't have the perfect list for you. So having said that, if, I'm certainly interested in additional below market rate housing for that community, especially for sale townhomes. That would be something I would be interested in. Additionally, every time we get a project in this area, the idea of a bicycle pedestrian path and bridge that goes through this area to the community center comes up, the idea of that being created. However, since each of these projects is separate in its own entity, it's really hard and it doesn't seem to ever happen. I know that the last time that this came to the commission I know that the last time that this came to the commission, Commissioner Doran brought up last time this that the project, perhaps your philanthropic organization could see about whether there was an interest to contribute. So I'm hoping that you did that and I'd be interested to hear what they said. But I think this is something that needs to happen in order for a sense of community as well as to mitigate some of the traffic in the area that we just my my other commissioners were talking about. I do have a couple of questions that concern me. So the idea of keeping the BMR units separate that I thought we were supposed to be, I thought these were going to be inclusionary, which I they this now it feels like they're separate. I understand that it's in the middle, but yet they are still separate. So I and I think that the responsibility is to bring these BMR units. So I I don't understand why if you have to bring in a different group to build them in order to meet your requirement of 15%, I don't understand how that works. But I don't feel good about them being separate. Secondly, and I if I'm reading this correctly, again, I had a I had difficulty discerning it because our first set of plans was very blurry. So I was having a hard time understanding. But it appeared that these housing units in the BMR were not equal to the market rate. For example, the four bedroom BMR townhouses were like 1200 or 1300 square feet, which seems kind of cramped for four bedrooms, while the market rate three bedrooms were 1650 to 1830 square feet with more bathrooms and more parking. So this feels to me to be unequal. And I'm pretty sure like that our BMR policy does say that they're supposed to be equally distributed throughout the project and that the unit sizes and bedroom counts should be similar percentages. So I am definitely pretty concerned about having this separate and unequal housing for the BMR units. And I think I'll leave my comment there. Thank you.
Commissioner Riggs?
Thank you. To the chair, I have a question for staff regarding the possibility of prioritizing. I have to assume there'll be a BMR waiting list. There typically is a significant one. And to staff, are we in a position to ask that displaced Bell Haven residents be prioritized? Can we do that?
Ms. Begat? You response?
Yeah, unfortunately, Commissioner Riggs, I would have to punt this question to Karina if possible. Here she can help me with that. Thank you.
I don't, as far as I know, at least for the required 15%, it wouldn't be possible to prioritize Bell Haven residents. It would be anyone who lives or works in Menlo Park. But we can, we can get further clarification on that if that helps.
I think that would be responsive of us to do that. I know we have discussed it in the past. Then I'm embarrassed to say I simply don't remember how it was resolved on that particular project. And this may be something for our legal counsel to address. But I I am at least partially optimistic that that would be possible. And then I wanted to echo the four points that Chair Doran made about the quality of the site plan, the change in in scope from the mixed use to the residential. I agree, the architecture looks thoughtful. I think more than thoughtful. I think it's interesting and skillfully done. And going back to the site plan, I have to say everything from the quality massing of the buildings to the Paseos that look quite attractive to me. The plaza looks attractive. The lawn looks like a wonderful destination. Even the street frontage, at least from what I can tell from the planting plans, looks nice. The walkways that are lightly sketched in blue look like they've been thought out so that you can actually get across a parking lot on the walkway in at least one location, and that's much appreciated. I had some second thoughts about the way the Paseo terminates just before Chrysler Drive. But I can see how logically for, shall we say consolidating different wheeled traffic, meaning, you know, bicycles have to work with cars as they have for the last 100 years. That consolidating them into the driveway maybe is the best choice. So the only remaining thing I'd like to comment on, if it's helpful to my other commission members. I too, when I when I first joined Habitat for Humanity on the board, I was rather concerned that the three bedroom apartments didn't have adequate space for a bed, a desk, and a play area for the children. And it actually took me several months to realize that the target audience was not my family. The target audience for these projects was for people who like to not only live together but sleep together to and more to a room. My best friend in college grew up that way. Even though there were lots of bedrooms in the house, the boys slept together because it was a family thing. And I started to learn more about what you do with your square footage if you're not a middle or middle upper class American, and it's just different. And so if it helps any, I came to not only an understanding but a a preference for responding to a different lifestyle with a different architecture. And if you can get three bedrooms out of 1200 square feet, then that's what meets that market. So so that's actually a good thing. I think Commissioner Harris also had a question about the BMR clustering. As an architect, I have faced this a number of times on the planning commission. I've seen this a number of times. There is funding available, large government funding that unfortunately was designated and remains designated for projects that are dedicated to low income housing or to senior housing. And therefore, they cannot be funded if they're seen as mixed with market rate housing or mixed with retail. It's actually rather inconvenient for developers and city planners, but it's a reality of funding. And that's why clustering the BMRs on that lot is actually quite clever. I hadn't seen that before where within one project, a developer is willing to segment part of his property so that he can go after more funding to build more BMRs. And I have to say, I very much appreciate that. And I would like to thank the Sabrato organization for for thinking of that. And I do agree that the centralized location avoids the marginalizing of these units or their occupants or their lifestyle. And I think the architecture rather importantly reflects an equal interest in the quality of the facades. So overall, I am not able to find anything to criticize in this project at this point, and I'm very supportive.
Commissioner DeCarty?
Yeah, I would just thank the Sabrato organization, all three of your arms for your just decades long commitment to Silicon Valley, this community. I've had the opportunity to be engaged with your philanthropies and the work that you do across the community is just a huge part of the fabric of this area. I'm also really excited about this proposal that you've brought back this time. So I fully anticipate being supportive of where you're going in this. I have a question and then I'll also give my reflections. My question is just about the decision as you went to all residential, this mix of residential relative to building more units, essentially being able to maximize the total number of people that you could have housed on this set of properties and how you came to this decision.
I'll take a first cut at it, then I'll pass it over to Chek Tang. But within Connect Menlo, there is a very distinct formula that you have to follow in terms of number of units, square footage, all the density. So it's very prescriptive. So that so in, there was a lot of playing around with how many units we can put in. What's the size, the square footage of those to hit kind of that sweet spot within that sliding scale? And so this fit within that sliding scale number. If we had more units than the unit square footages would change, it would not be marketable anymore. But that's kind of more of a layman's explanation. I'll pass it over to Chek Tang. You can give a little bit more of a detailed explanation.
Yeah, so I think two different things. One is quantitative is with the sliding scale of zoning. Obviously, when we went to our residential plan, we 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 wanted to have that diversity of housing type, first of all, for sale and also for rent. Otherwise, you're going to end up with pancakes like everywhere that you find elsewhere in the Silicon Valley, like five or six stories. Unfortunately, what that does is forces the entire project to be for rent. And I think it's very, as you mentioned earlier, it's very few project that really allows you to have this mix of for sale and for rent. So and also I think for for the neighborhood contacts and the, you know, compliance with the division of the Connect Menlo, that variations in scale is really important to the neighborhood as well. So it was kind of a balance of the two things that we kind of went this way after the the office building went away. So.
Yeah, thank you. That's great. Very helpful in that mix. And I'll just say that I think the site and building design is among the best that we've seen. I think the use of open spaces among the best that we've seen. I think you're completely on the right track with those as you refine the project in that mix. On the on the community amenity piece of it, I think the biggest thing for me is just to keep on engaging with the community. I think you showed a slide at the beginning of the number of people you've spoken with and the number of organizations. Just keep on doing that throughout the course of this. And absolutely, community zeroing in on Bell Haven residents, residents that, as Ms. Jones remarks, is so well illustrated, are getting priced out or squeezed out for all sorts of reasons and understanding the best possible ways that a community amenity could help at least address some of those needs. And then on the the BMR housing, I'll just say for me, I think one of the things I really value is hearing from the Housing Commission about the the mix of types across the scales. And so that would be great to hear their input at that appropriate time. And then I would echo Commissioner Harris's comments quite a bit in this. So I think the first is just to understand more when you come back, the sort of apple to apples about the square footage in the bedrooms for the BMR townhomes versus the for sale in this. And I I heard Commissioner Riggs's comments, and I suppose what I would say is I think any family would love to have more space to determine how to utilize as they see fit, full stop. And so it feels like it would be great to understand or just the clarity about the BMR units relative to the the comparison of the market rates. And then the other one, and I really appreciate the point about the financing and that financing being able to allow more BMR units. And I suppose when we see the project again, it's just to know what the trade off is. So if you had scattered them throughout the site but could not get the financing, what's the reduction or what's the impact? So just to to show the the difference between putting them in the in Lot C. And then to Commissioner Riggs's point about the sort of deftness of doing Lot C, it doesn't look like Lot C is connected to any historical definition of the lots legally in this mix. It looks like it's a new one. And so I wondered if there's a way to potentially borrow from the long political tradition in our country of drawing salamander like districts that went their way through states in order to reach particular goals. And if potentially Lot C might be able to have a similar Paseo like effect through the townhome in some way that that if in fact that might help with some of the integration. So you don't need to respond, but I'm just curious or for consideration that makes as you draw lot lines around A, B, C, and D. But overall, from the first time we've seen this project to now, just really excited with the direction you all are taking and your commitment to look into these questions. And that's my feedback for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. You got your hand raised? You're on mute. Do you not, oh, you maybe didn't mean to have your hand raised?
That's correct.
So I have a comment. And so the BMR, I I definitely do not support having them separated from the other units. And and I do agree that square footage is up to whoever the family that moves in to the units to use it, however they see fit. And I think that I think I was a little kind of put off by that because who who is low income now in in this time? So we don't know who is going to be filling those apartments and what they are, they're, how they want to to utilize the space as as Vice Chair mentioned, DeCarty. But it looks good. The rest of the project is is fine for me. I just, the BMR units being separated is really a problem for me.
Thank you. Do we have any other commissioners that want to speak? So I think I'll ask Ms. Begat if she got enough input from the study session. If you have particular things you'd like to hear from the commission on further.
No, Chair Dorian, I think we had great input from the commission. Thank you all for your time. This is really good and I'm sure the applicants will be appreciative.
Great. Well, in that case, I will close the study session and ask Ms. Sandmeyer if she has informational items for us.
Yes, good evening again. So the next Planning Commission meeting will be a joint meeting with the Housing Commission to go over parts of the housing element update and have a discussion on that. So that's in one week, changing the schedule a little bit. And then in three weeks, we'll have another kind of regular Planning Commission meeting. We haven't confirmed all the items on that agenda since the public hearing notice hasn't gone out. But I will have updates on that next week. All the items on that agenda since the public hearing notice hasn't gone out, but I will have updates on that next week. Um, that concludes my updates. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. It's like we have a question from Commissioner DeCarty.
Yeah, thank you for the updates, Ms. Sandmeyer. Uh, earlier tonight, we had a a a good point raised in one of the. Projects we were looking at about parking uh and a and then a a brief comment from Chair Doran. Uh, and so my question is, what is the process that we as a planning commission can actually. Agendize and look at and understand where we are right now with the parking regulations and how they uh are. Impacting current proposals and projects, especially given some of the comments that we've received recently that Commissioner Harris. Mentioned. Is there again, can there be a process for us as we have done with a special study session on ADUs, for example, or as. We're rightly, and I'm very excited to be doing the joint uh session next time on the housing element.
I mean, it's something I can discuss with the planning management. Generally, the city council directs staff work, and so if it's something that requires staff support. It can be problematic if it's not a city council priority and staff isn't directed to work on it. So. That's something to kind of be aware of. Um, but we'll certainly look into it a little more.
All right, I I appreciate that, or if there's some way that we can. Alert the city council. Is there some way we can ever do a sense of the planning commission that we would like to have the city council direct us to do something? So that they know that feedback as opposed to what we're often invited to do, which is a as individuals to go talk to city council members is. There are ever appropriate process like that for us?
Um, I I think it may be possible to have for the planning commission to nominate a commissioner to speak on behalf of the commission at the city council. But I'd have to. Check on that process and the exact steps that would need to be taken.
Fabulous. That'd be great. Maybe next time uh we can follow up on that would be terrific.
Any other questions? Commissioner Tate.
Um, I just have a a question about a a process. And I think in in several meetings, uh, when we've had written comments, they've been read. You know, allowed since we're on Zoom, and I noticed tonight the two comments, or maybe there were three uh written comments were not read. I think one of them was for one of the single family homes and then um Ms. Jones's uh comments. So just curious to if that was just an oversight tonight or if in the past. It was just uh an accommodation that was being made.
And we've tried to move away from that. It can take a lot of time and often there are speakers who reiterate with what was already written. What we've done is add the comments to the agenda, and I'm not sure if that was mentioned tonight. So. If that's that was an oversight, I apologize. We'll mention that in the future, but the idea is for the public to be able to go to the agenda and read the comments. Online.
Thank you for clarifying that. You're welcome.
You have any other questions? Okay, looks like we're done. Uh, ten fourteen, which considering we had a scoping session and a study session tonight. It's not too bad. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Chair Doran.
Thank you, Chair Doran. Good night, everyone.